Good morning, everybody. We'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted in person and via conference call in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 199. Council chambers is open to members of the public while continuing to use current telecommuting process in place. To join the meeting via teleconference, the number is on the agenda on our website. We have an agenda before us. Does anybody have any changes? If not, a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Also move.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We will move to Agenda Item 2.1 Electoral Boundaries Bylaw Review.
Yes, good morning, Council. Brian from Administration. This topic is kind of a unique topic that all municipalities do need to address from time to time. The last time Wheatland County did have a bylaw, or their current bylaw in place was in 2001. So kind of, given, you know, 23 years have passed and we're upcoming to a new election in 2025, this bylaw does need to be revised and in place prior to December 31st, 2024. So that's kind of the reason why this has come forward today. So upon reviewing the bylaw and just taking a look at the resident count and the number of residents per division, we did realize that just due to some growth on the west side of the county, that there has been just a little bit of a shift per division. And this is kind of why this is coming back today. So kind of what we've done is just taken our, just our districts, went through our GIS data through assessment and got our every assessed residential dwelling, residential dwelling, and kind of put them populated them onto a map. So when we came and populated them up into a map, we came up with an average and the average was 525 residents. And then we kind of came to how many residents were in each current electoral division. So right now, as you can see on page two, just a chart with each electoral division, the residence count per division and the percentage change from the average. So there is a presentation in here that was, that's attached to this report that was done by ISL, which is a engineering company. And they, they actually did Rocky View County's electoral boundary adjustment when they went from nine electoral divisions down to seven. This electoral boundary proposed adjustment wouldn't be so contentious because it would just remain from seven to seven. So there would be no shrinking of divisions. And realistically, in the grand scheme of things, the, the overall changes proposed by Administration, which there are options for sure for Council to consider, they're less sweeping than shrinking divisions down from nine to seven. Kind of the, just in the general context of this conversation and presentation is that the west side divisions would most likely shrink if possible and the ones on the east sides would grow in land area. And it's not necessarily about the amount of land that each division would have. It's more about just the residents that each individual councillor would be representing. So that's kind of what we're trying to do is just gain some equity in that perspective. The presentation that ISL did, and it was at a conference and I did ask ISL's permission prior to publishing it in our report. They, they did mention that, you know, it's, it's an exercise that needs to be at least reviewed on an annual basis. It probably should have been reviewed prior to the 2020, 2021 election. It just, you know, it kind of slipped through Administration's fingers at that time. So kind of when we go through this, just the, those are just the general observations. Kind of the, just the key strategic questions that I would have is that, that the committee should consider is how can we ensure that this adjustment process remains non-political and data-driven? So when I do speak about data-driven, it's just more of how do we balance out the number of rate pairs that each councillor, individual councillor would represent? And then again, essential questions, how will the current census data, which relatively did not change that much, how would that, in that GIS data, how would that be utilized to inform boundary adjustments? So Administration's thought process was to take our census population, our total residence counts and divide that to come up with a fair number. And then kind of come up with that average number and then just split that among the, the divisions. So one question that Administration did have internally and we kind of made sure that this was addressed was the, just pockets of populations within divisions. So a good, a good example would be Hutterite colonies. So that was one that we analyzed individually. And we did, in our solution with the GIS data, each individual resident is assessed as a residential dwelling. So those are all accounted for. So any small pockets of populations within the county would be reflected on the maps. So kind of just going through this again, the, our key Bennett, or key results that we were kind of looking to get is just the equal distribution of residential representation for each councillor. There is a generally accepted rule, which was presented in ISL's presentation, to have a difference of 25% difference from the average. So that being higher or lower. As kind of presented on page two, we're just a little bit out of that range, not by a lot, but just by a bit. Division five, which has seen the most significant growth just with the Lake Smearfield population and all of those residents building out, it has jumped significantly over that average and it will continue to do so as the, the residents keep getting built over there. And then, so today, all we're really looking to do is just gather some committee feedback to start incorporating this into a new bylaw for council. And we, we would recommend that a change would be made to this bylaw. So on page four is the existing bylaw. So this is from 2021 again. It, it is fairly clear exactly the existing population, what it changed from in 2021. I'm not sure exactly what year it changed from, but that was the last change. And then on page six is just an overall map. So Administration is proposing to do something very similar. So we want to attach our map to our bylaw as well, just so it's very clear. So we do have the presentation, which starts on page seven, and ISL did a great job. People may recognize Mr. Brian Conger. He's actually our consultant for our IDP with the town of Strathmore right now. And he, he kind of does this stuff. I, I did chat with him for a little bit just before one of our IDP meetings on, on this boundary adjustment. Very knowledgeable guy. So after their presentation, which Council has a chance to review and ask questions for sure, we get to our maps, the proposed maps. So each map is a draft and although it's not, the, the version number is just on the bottom right-hand side. So each map is kind of, it kind of shows the difference. There's a legend here as well. Although these maps are small, Administration did print out bigger maps so Council can take a look at just to have a better view of exactly the adjustments. One of the main things that Council just needs to take a look at is just the new, the new residence counts per division and kind of where they sit within the average. That, that's a really good takeaway when we're trying to look at equal representation in each division. Yeah, and we, we did put together four maps. Administration, again, we're just providing these maps to Council just so we can gather committee feedback and bring this back to Council for future first reading. I don't know if Council wanted to take, if Council has questions or if Council wants to take a look at the, the bigger blown-up maps just to kind of review the actual proposed boundary adjustments. That does conclude my presentation. It's open to questions. Thank you.
So first, let's open the floor for questions regarding the presentation. Not hearing any, maybe it would be, oh, Councilor Castor, please go ahead.
I know on Division six, there is two new Hutterite colonies got development. Our requests, that's going to, that would bring it over the average of, and is that taken into consideration?
So our GIS data would have been from, the exact date would have been last year. So last year, we brought in the data for the resident counts. So it would have been reflective of last year. So if, if it is a new dwelling or new dwellings are being constructed, like as of today, it wouldn't be reflected in the bylaw. Like this proposal with the, the new residence counts. Yeah.
Yeah, because that makes, did I see 600 and some on Division six? And then two more colonies, there'll probably be another 200 people. It makes quite a difference.
Yes, that would. And then we can take a look at that one specifically because if there is growth, if there is going to be specific growth within specific electoral boundaries, one thing we would try to do is potentially even shrink Division six even further so we can accommodate for that growth. Some of the options, although the, the maps in the package are very small, some of the, the actual packages or the adjustment, proposed adjustments in this bylaw, it would actually shrink Division five like below the average because we do anticipate that it would be growing, like just have more resident populations in that division. So something to always account for and that, that's great feedback.
So another question, it looks to me like the bulk of the population growth on the west side is in what are currently called hamlets. Is there a process, I mean, most of those hamlets are bigger than the villages in the other parts of the county. Does it not make more sense to have them become villages? Or is there no process in place for that?
There, there could be. But just kind of some of the more local examples that I would see wouldn't necessarily turn it into like a village. So kind of one example I would just come off off the top of my head would be Langdon. So Langdon is a hamlet in Rocky.
Not in our county.
Well, exactly. So not in our county, but that would be like a hamlet of 5,000 people. I'd definitely look into it for sure and just kind of provide some more information back to the committee the next time we do present it or to Council, just to kind of give it more of a firm answer. But just off the top of my head, when I kind of take a look at that one, it wouldn't. Rocky View Counties is actually pretty interesting as well. So they have a division councillor that looks after that hamlet. So I think it would be councillor Shul at Rocky View County. He would just be specifically, his electoral boundary is, is Langdon. But I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that one and let you know. Thank you.
Councilor Lepriese.
I just have a couple of comments. So I was just thinking about councillor Castor's comment about the Hutterite colonies. So 200 people, but how many residents? Like, we're talking about houses or dwellings, not people, right? So, so that might not change it as much as you might think, but just as a comment. I thought the ISL presentation is really informative. I'm glad you had it in there. It was really good. And I liked that they had identified a couple of key things to look at, like when you're looking at changing the boundary, boundaries, that you look at future growth, easily identifiable boundaries, communities of interest and diversity in each division, and maintaining existing boundaries as much as possible, trying to change it as least as possible. So I thought those are all good key considerations when we're just looking at what, which proposals we like best, I guess, or what, yeah, for feedback.
All good discussion. Any other questions?
I would echo councillor Lepriese's comments. I think the report was really fulsome and certainly the presentation from ISL is very informative and gives really good context. And I appreciate the work that Administration has done on this file. I think it's, especially with having the new federal census data too, it's good just to, I think it's good timing and because we have had so many advances in our GIS and our data management for the county. It's the committee's wish to perhaps take a break to review some of the large maps. I know I struggle to read the charts on the digital files. So it might be good to take a look at some of the bigger maps.
For sure.
How long would people like, do you want to break until the public participation committee? Or would you like a shorter time to review the large maps? What's the committee's preference? Yeah. Is everybody all right with that? So we could recess committee of the whole and we can reconvene after the public participation committee meeting? Everybody is excellent. Okay, we will recess committee of the whole until we call it back to order following the public participation committee meeting. Thanks, everybody. Good afternoon. We will reconvene our committee of the whole meeting. Let's return to Agenda Item 2.1. All committee members had an opportunity to review the larger scale maps. Is there any additional feedback that we would like to provide Administration in terms of bringing this back to Council for consideration? Councilor Laursen.
I think we should make them all geographically the same instead of worrying about population. That's a joke. Boy, did you ever worry for.
There is probably a case to be made for that, but.
So just to provide a little bit more context, so Administration did provide Council an opportunity to review the versions of the maps, one through four. And just as Administration did mention to Council, and I wasn't sure if I had mentioned in the committee of the whole meeting itself, but when we were coming up with those versions, Administration came up with version one, which we thought was probably the most likely change scenario. Just in Administration's perspective, just with the populations trying to balance those out. And then we came up with further options for Council to consider. There is no right or wrong option for the boundaries to be adjusted. However, when Administration put together these options, I'd say that our first option would have been version one. Second would be version two and so on and so forth. We did want to provide Council just some options. And if Council does have other options as well or think Administration is not marked on any of our options for mapping, please feel free to let us know. We are looking, looking to gather committee feedback. So at, at this point, there are a few outstanding questions that Administration will bring back in our report. So there was a question that was raised during the committee of the whole and I believe it was answered after, but we just want to make sure we get that into a report back to all of Council. So the hamlets to the village question. There was a question about a potential growing Hutterite colony in Division six. And we will bring back information to all of Council on that one in our report. And then we're just looking to gather the committee feedback on version one through four. So if, if the committee does have direction that they'd like to provide now, that's great. If not, we'll bring back a report to a subsequent council meeting sooner rather than later. And the only reason why I say sooner rather than later is that there is a 60-day petition window for the electoral boundary review. I was chatting with one of my municipal colleagues that had an issue with the petition period that they didn't actually leave it open for 60 days and their bylaw got overturned. So the, the work they did on the bylaw got overturned. I think they most likely just put that same bylaw back forward with that petition period though. So it's just important that, so as of today, February 20, or February 13th, take off 60 days because that's the petition period. We'll still need to draft the bylaw. Which shouldn't be too cumbersome, but we still need to do a little bit of public engagement on that as well. So if there are any questions or the committee would like to provide Administration feedback on the maps, please let us know. Thank you.
Should we as, should we decide that we could get rid of half of them? Like, would it help you if you had, if we, we, we chose version one and two for you to work on as opposed then you don't have to do any more work on three and four? Does that save you any work? That's all I'm asking.
I would say not really, only because in that bylaw, it should, we should be describing the boundaries, which actually might take some time to write out. And, and that was one of the tips in ISL, ISL's presentation is that we should have in writing, not just the map, how the boundaries are defined. And that just does save some potential questions or mis- clarification of the actual boundaries themselves.
Councilor Laursen and then Deputy Reeve Clausen and then Councilor Lepriese.
And I'll just add one. I had a chat with Brian on it. The, the interesting thing is if you took, if you look at version three, that leaves Shannon and I both in Division one and nobody in Division seven. So there's, there's other considerations too with some of these maps.
Keeping in mind, we do, I mean, we're all thinking it and looking at it that way, but we do need to de-politicize and just look at that long-term, you know, governance of the county. Deputy Reeve Clausen and then Councilor Lepriese.
I've had a chance to digest this over lunch, a little bit thinking about it. So in that train of thought about future, so sit here and agriculture is a big part of this county. And these divisions, like mine especially, will shrink so much when you have that conflict of agriculture and acreages and higher density populations. That person that represents that area in the future is going to be in conflict with the rest of Council. So you need to have that balance where you have more. And you know, you look at Division six, seven, one, huge agriculture. But you know, the challenges I faced dealing with this. So you're going to shrink out even further. And I can, any quarter section around in my division, just about guarantee there's a house, if not three on a quarter, and it's going to get worse. Tom's area is, is, as well, sorry. And so how do you successfully not have the division that is going to come to Rocky View? That is in Rocky View now and other neighboring things. We're going to have the same thing here in the future where it's just going to be like a horseshoe. And you're going to have that diametrically opposed thing. We have a chance here to do something different. I have no idea how to do it. Just going to state that. That's not my job. But you, you need to have a really good balance. And like I said, we should have stripes across the county where you have a, but you know, is that realistic? I don't know, but you have a balance of everything. Because it's really easy, and I mean, we've had arguments here. You could just look at the tapes about, you know, developments in a hamlet versus something out east. And it's, but that's not going to, it's just going to make it worse because you're going to have these councillors representing areas that have, and that's our job. And you're going to silo them. So just thinking about it. How do we make that so we, we avoid that? Maybe we don't have boundaries at all. I don't know.
Councilor Lepriese.
I'm just thinking about what you just said. There are scenarios here, like I think number two where, so Division two would go up into your area. She would also have a lot of denser population. Division three and four both have denser population. I don't think that it necessarily puts you at a, you against the rest of Council. But yeah, it's just a.
But you look at the, the ones to the east and with this east worth his west. And it's happening naturally.
For sure, one in seven are.
So how do you, how do you stop that from happening for future success for the, for the, for the councils here? So they have a balanced approach on that.
I think for me, one of the core things to keep in mind is that while we are elected to represent our divisions, we are all here for the good of the county. And I think we need to, every decision that we make, we need to be thinking about how does this impact agriculture? We need to be thinking about how do we build up our hamlets to, you know, direct as much development into the hamlets. And we do have some well-established ASPs already, thanks to work of previous councils. And if we can direct, obviously industrial development into those established ASPs, that can help mitigate some of those interface issues that can really create some of that challenge that I think you see sometimes in other areas where you have that interface. And those ASPs are developed to, they're designed to mitigate those interface issues just in terms of the intensity of industrial development and proximity to residential development and things like that. So it is something we have to keep in mind. And I think Administration is trying to maintain, you know, they haven't just isolated out like Smearfield and Lyalta. They've tried to make it a, a broader area so we don't have, you know, a, a larger hamlet where you have a councillor, well, even Carsline Speargrass is another good example. Donna's been representing for quite some time a much smaller geographic area with heavier, more dense population. And you have a lot of agriculture as well and interface with industry and, you know, some of those challenging issues as well. And it's the reality of what we're going to face. And I think we're going to be faced with that challenge of maintaining our core identity as an agricultural municipality and trying to plan for being a thriving, sustainable county going forward. So it is going to be a challenge, but I think our best way to mitigate that is to be, for each of us to be committed to doing what is best for the county and not, you know, specifically to our divisions.
Just one thing Administration would like to know as well. The councillor's duties and responsibilities are outlined in the MGA. And one of the clauses in there, I, I don't have the section memorized off the top of my head, but it is to make decisions on, like for the better, or on behalf of the whole municipality. So there, there is no section in the MGA that's kind of supersedes on a divisional basis. Of course, your division does rep, or elect the, the council member into there. But when it does come to actually making decisions at the council table, you have to consider the municipality as a whole. And totally respecting that, you know, you're certainly going to have a diverse division between three and seven or five and one, just the, the east to the west. Like, it's just a different kind of, I guess, like style of living and lifestyle, right? So that, that is no secret that though, that would be different. But, you know, there's areas in the county that can provide for both, which is like excellent as well. So it, yeah, that, that's just one point that Administration would like to make.
Any other questions or feedback about what's been proposed so far?
So what I was going to say before I got off track, track there though, is just that, just feedback, I guess. For me, version three represents the most change. And, and I don't know if it's, to me, it looks like the boundaries are not easily identified if you were to go out and say, Division one, what is your boundary? You'd have to say this and this and this and this and this. Where some of the others seem like they'd be a simpler way to define your, each. So that's just my feedback. I don't prefer version three.
Any other specific feedback?
The only thing I would add is when we're doing the report, could we just like communicate really clearly how you've done like the population and the resident, like what data sources we're drawing from? Just so that when the public is reviewing the rationale for some of the delineations and, and just any assumptions you're making around. I think we can all anticipate some projected growth just based on established plans that are in place and those types of things. But just if we can really flesh that out in the report so that if somebody's coming into this, straight to like the next report coming to Council, that's all summarized really clearly what we're, what data sets we're using. And because I think you're using a data set that's far superior to what's available from the, the federal census. It's more refined data. And I think that's, we're lucky that we have that, like, level of granular data to rely on. So. And I appreciate if you are looking into the Hutterite communities and the projected potential growth there. There was a, a comment just made about, around divisions that could reduce populations, at least initially of the, the colony that is having like the new colony. I don't know all the exact proper language, but when they're starting a new colony, it's often a branch of an existing colony. So, but then they both grow. So a little bit more information on that would be great for consideration as well. And I appreciate that you are like under, like having the ratio bent a little bit towards like a lower ratio where we're projecting significant growth so that we can, this can be a longer-term structure that will serve us, even though obviously a lot of it's uncertain. But really appreciate all of the work that Administration has done. And I did hear a comment and I agree, the fact that this has been done in-house without the need for expensive consultants or those types of fees. I know our ratepayers always appreciate that as well. So, and, and we appreciate it too. So thank you. But I know it's administrative, it's a significant task. So thank you.
Maybe one follow-up question from Administration. Would the committee, would the committee like to provide any feedback to Administration on, you know, option versions that are, you know, I heard from committee member Lepriese that three is not good. I think that's probably a safe assumption. We did want to just provide options to all of Council. Is there any other options that, you know, Council could just say, no, like, you can just scrap it because it doesn't work well? Because we're just looking to kind of refine the options? I guess Member Iker made, made that point earlier. So maybe it actually would be good just to refine the options now and then answer those questions and see if the committee can digest it. Maybe we could bring it back to Council to see what version to go forward with.
For me, I wouldn't mind just a little bit more time to analyze just because I couldn't, I couldn't see the population. I just couldn't, it wasn't clear enough on my digital copy for the projections. And I would just like a little bit more time for myself to consider what ASPs we have approved, what kind of like residential density are in those. Actually, that may be helpful too, just to have like a map with the approved ASPs and maybe a different color of ones that are, I don't know the proper term, but basically like shelved, like not actively being developed versus ones that are actively being developed. Just so we have some idea of, and we may see some that are shelved get picked up as well. I'm especially thinking around the Carsline Speargrass area and certainly specific to your division as well. But it could be anywhere in the county as well. That may just help. And actually, if we could get a map with all of our colonies on it, that would be. Just. Interesting to see as well. I've looked on Google Maps and. There's one colony that comes up as a nightclub. A nightclub on Google when you search it. Right? It would just be interesting to see. Where they're located and. And again, the ASPs like where we have direct control approved, whether it's built out or not.
Okay, that sounds good to administration. So I do have two sets of maps printed out for two counselors that did request them. If like the of the larger maps of the versions, if there is anyone that would like those larger maps as well, just please let administration know, get them printed off for you, thank you.
Thank you. Question to administration, do we need motions to accept its information or it's already on our agenda?
No, I don't think we need motions to accept it. You can just move to the next item.
Perfect, let's move to agenda item two point two.
Yes, council, so on page thirty four is just the legislative policy updates. So this is just a report following up the council compensation. Review that was presented at council on November twenty first, twenty twenty three. So in that policy or in the recommendations, there was three, three recommendations and the first were two were accepted by council. They have not been integrated into a policy as of yet, however, administration does have resolutions to. Or does have direction to integrate those into the existing policy. So during the November twenty first count regular council meeting, there were several questions regarding council compensation that did remain undressed. Unaddressed, sorry, and the questions that were. Unaddressed were on page thirty four of the agenda package under key information. So there was a question regarding full day compensation for council meetings regardless of the length. The policy on board service conference attendance needs clarification, so that would be someone sitting on. For example, the WHMB to attend to ASHA. Things like that to kind of broaden their skillset. And administration did make recommendations and we'll kind of go into those. And the differentiation between evening and. The daytime per diems of partial rates, that. Was a question of council as well that needed evaluation. And then one that keeps coming up is that review of the policy on limits for board and subcommittee meeting claims. So that was another topic that was discussed on the twenty first. And then a topic that did arise on February sixth at the, at that council meeting was the possibility for council members to attend ASB meetings. Or it's kind of a similar to any other similar situation council can think of. Or the committee can think of just to get that into policy, so it's. Applied uniformly across all council. Two items that administration also recommend that the committee may discuss today will be the the. Reviewing the frequency of the council compensation committee. That was just something we kind of thought of outside of the box, that's something that has been in policy for a long time. And council or the committee may consider amending that. Especially if the remuneration is tied to Alberta CPI. Or another means that is adjusted on an annual basis, it might actually remove. The requirement for a committee to meet twice a year, or sorry, once every two years. And that would just be something that may reduce some administrative burden and also. Maybe de-politicize council voting on their own compensation during their current term. Another thing that administration identified that we actually really thought was a great idea. Was actually defining the monthly honorariums and versus the meeting per diems. And this is something that was a, we identified in Clearwater County's policy, then we've attached that into this request for clarity as well, just for council to. See and consider. And all of these is just to provide clarity. To council, the public and administration on just the, how council is compensated for their time and efforts. So I'll just go over the the relevant observations that we did have. And I did, I did include administration's recommendations and this is just kind of, just to kind of give council a discussion point. Administration totally recognizes that we are not the decision maker, we're just here to provide some advice for council to at least have a starting point on this one. And nor does administration have any need to. Input on this this policy specifically anyways. So one relevant observation that we did make in our research and this was conducted through. Seven other comparable municipalities that we frequently compare ourselves to. Is that there was a question regarding compensation for full day meetings of a, a council meeting that doesn't. Last the full day, so this would be, say, we have a council meeting that starts at nine and it ends at eleven. There, there was a discussion on that that was asking about provisions for a full day because the the full day has been scheduled. So when through our research, we did find that there was no other municipality that did have. A provision for. Compensation of a full day meeting if it, even if it did end early. And typically it did have the first four hours, the second four hours. Actually, Clearwater County as well had a policy that had the first four hours, the second four hours. And then the four hours after that, so that it kind of did encompass twelve hours, which is actually kind of interesting because. That situation doesn't happen super frequently, but it does from time to time, sometimes council is in. Meetings throughout the day, last Tuesday actually is a great example. We did a council meeting that went from nine to, I believe, three, then we had an open house that went from probably six thirty when people started showing up until nine. So that would be kind of more than a full day, so it's just something for council to consider and it should be something that council does clarify in in your own policy. So our our recommendation was do not change the full day per diem. To compensate for a full day, if a meeting is only a partial day for a council meeting. Conference attendance was another item that was brought up on November twenty first as well. So at that meeting, it was, I feel like sometimes council, they'll bring their. Request to come to an annual meeting. At my time in the county, which is kind of approaching on eight years, I've actually never seen a counselor. Bring one forward and not be compensated for it, so to me, this is almost like a, it would be a no brainer, easy solution because I do. Administration's recommendation would be that it does enhance a board member's. Knowledge of the board and the industry as well, so to me, in instead of having a counselor bring it back every time, it might be good just to. State in policy, something along the lines of council is allowed to attend one meeting per. Term per year, like of an annual conference, something along those lines. We we thought that that was a good comment by council and it probably should be integrated into the policy. The per diem standardization, so. Right now, through our comparisons of our other municipalities that we looked at. Wheatland County was actually the only municipality that had. A daytime meeting and an evening time meeting per diem. So I think just to provide clarity, it actually, our recommendation would be just to standardize the rates into one, so instead of having the. I forgot what the one is, one is half of the full time day and the other is more than half of a full time day. What we did was we put this into schedule B just for the committee's consideration. So what we did is have our municipality, our comparators of the full day rate and the partial day rate. And the partial day rate, as you can see, is that we're the only one with two separate rates. And kind of the full, the difference was actually kind of interesting, so a lot, the majority of them just took fifty percent of the full day rate. So our our recommendation would just be to align with other municipalities and move in that direction. The full day rate will be. Changed in accordance with. The committee's recommendation and brought back to council for ratification. And that would be effective as of November first, twenty twenty three. So we think that just eliminating that might clear up the policy and just provide a little bit better. Clear guidance to council when they're filling out their timesheets. And then. There was a limitation on claims that was brought up at the November twenty first council meeting as well, that is to related to the board and subcommittee meetings. So keep in mind that the council compensation committee. Their recommendation was to not compensate any board meetings for less than one hour. That was the the recommendation from the November twenty first presentation. However, administration thought that. Again, councils never had an issue where a meeting or a board meeting or a subcommittee meeting has not been paid if council puts it on their timesheet. Or they bring it to council for ratification. So administration thought was just to put in like a set a limit to twelve board meetings, twelve subcommittee meetings per subcommittee. And if council member or a member of the public wants. Authorization to be compensated for those other meetings, it would just be required to come back to council. And this would just be kind of a starting point, as I did mention, I. Administration just kind of brings forward recommendations just based on. Kind of what they see and like ultimately, we're just looking to clarify the policy for council, so everyone's kind of on the same page. And then the ASP conferences and other common boards or commissions filled by the majority of council. Is the conversation that came up on February sixth of the regular council meeting. So councillor or deputy Reeve Clausen was, went to the ASB board meeting, he's not a member of the ASB board, but he was. Compensated and I think council's general conversation behind that one was that it would enhance his knowledge on agriculture and also. Provides networking opportunities and kind of see. What what the ASB board is doing, so this kind of a. A couple of things to note here is that councillor Clausen or deputy Reeve Clausen, sorry, definitely could have sat on that board. But he did step aside to. Have more public engage or public involvement into the the county boards, which is. His decision to choose, of course, but it might just be worthwhile putting in policy, something along those lines. For example, maybe there's comes a day where. All of council doesn't sit on MPC, but council wishes to refine their skills at like on planning matters. And if there is an annual MPC conference or something like that. It it might just kind of clean that up and just kind of. Limit the debate at the council table, so we understand the generally established rules for council compensation. And how how that will be treated and uniformly applied to all council members. So those are the the items that were brought forward at either the November twenty first or the November sixth council or February sixth council meeting. Those were those ones. And then I just want to kind of discuss some of the other two that. Administration identified through our kind of just workings and. Evaluation of other policies. So the first one would be just to eliminate the midterm policy reviews of council compensation, just something for council to consider. By no means is this. Something that administration feels strongly about, we really don't, we thought it would just be a good discussion piece for council. And the committee or the committee to dis consider. With the council committee's recommendation of tying the. Council compensation to be adjusted with Alberta CPI. Or another means that council deemed appropriate. This will be adjusted on an annual basis, which is actually a great item, so it doesn't have to come back once every two years and it is like a fair consistent. Third party number that kind of comes in and council uniformly applies it to their policy. So it's just something to consider, it might be something to consider to do. In a year prior to an election, so then it's reviewed by council, like a a committee of council. Brought forward and then council votes on it, then the year leading up to an election, it's not brought forward or for discussion. Because as of right now, the council compensation is due to come back in twenty twenty five, that's just the committee meets once every two years. Just something to consider and council can also maybe just defer it. Into a non-election year, that might also be a way to kind of mitigate that, if council does seem, think that there is a an issue with that. Again, administration did note that we found that one thing that was super clear was Clearwater County's policy. On defining the definitions of their their salary rate and per diem rate, so their salary rate would be our. Equivalent to our monthly honorarium, so we we kind of put this into schedule C just for the committee to consider. And it just really kind of says, you know, here's exactly what you're supposed to do for this. Here's what your per di, your per diem rate would be for a meeting. And we thought that this would just provide. Council clarity on this one specifically, because even. New administration does find it difficult when these items aren't defined by council, by policy and approved by all of council, of course. So we just found that this might actually be a very good starting point to at least get these. This wording in into policies of council and the public and administration has a. Great definition of of this. So kind of the the key result that administration is looking for is just to update their remuneration policies, so they're equitable, transparent. And aligned with our comparable municipalities. Again, uniform compensation practices, eliminating discrepancies in in any kind of decision making. Expediting claims and reducing the gray areas of council compensation as well. So you guys can, or so council and committees can focus on the the actual governance and key decision making items. More to clean up the council council meetings as well. You know, if ten percent is, ten percent of the meeting could be cleaned up with just clear policies. It might be beneficial to council to kind of keep the the council meetings to like decision making of council. And the rest of the report is in there. If there are any questions, and I'm sure there are, that will facilitate some discussion, please let me know, thank you.
Any questions regarding administration's report?
So one thing that Clearwater is doing that we're not doing is the salary rate. Does not include. Community events. Where the per diem, which we don't do this, per diem to. For community events or social functions to represent the county. As if it's in my area, I don't put that down. I think everybody's been doing the same, so that is one difference that. Clearwater is doing to us, for us.
And just to note is that we aren't saying that we believe that Wheatland County should copy Clearwater's policy word for word. All we're saying is that this is a great starting point to help clarify how currently Wheatland County is treating compensation, so. It's just more of, hey, here's how they defined it, our definitions can certainly differ from theirs. It's just how do we get this down in writing to reflect current practices and just make it clear for all of council?
Well, there's one thing that could be added, though, that I do find, I wanted to bring forward, I was going to wait till the. Council business tours, is that if we are all invited to a business tour. It should be known beforehand, like we seem to bring it up, but every single. Before every meeting is that if if all of council is invited to something. That we shouldn't have to bring it to council to approve whether we're paid it per diem on it. That's just a, we just save time, I think.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilor LaPreece.
Do you, do we want to go through each one and and talk about each one or?
Yeah, we can do it that way, or if there's sort of general support for administration's recommendations. We can. Affirm the recommendations if there's feedback where there's diversity of perspectives or. Sort of a counter consideration to administration's recommendations, I think it's important we bring those forward.
Well, generally, I agree with what is being presented here and the recommendations I think are good ones, so.
And just looking at schedule C here, because it's kind of the one that would probably be the most. Give the most oversight for us in the future to set, I would say. The base salary rate, the meetings with CAOs and directors, preparation time is pretty much what we do now. To include as their salary attendance at council meetings and orientation meetings and workshops and. Management training, I think that should be a per diem rate because usually. Most of those, other than the council meetings are away someplace. That's how I see it now, to change it that drastically right now would be very challenging. I have to pay somebody when I'm here to pick my place, so. It's really hard and I want to set somebody up after I'm here or not here or whatever, so you can have somebody worthwhile in the seat.
And I think just for clarity, administration, so that's just Clearwater.
Yeah, I'm just kind of my recommendations, like.
Yep.
And then, yeah, definitely having some limits on some things and doesn't say, you know. You can't do it, it's just you have an allowance of one conference and if you want to go to two. Then you have to ask for it, things like that, I think would be definitely needed. Yeah, so. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, and just again to clarify, this is Clearwater schedules, so. What administration would do is we would bring this back with how Wheatland County is currently applying our practices, so. The regularly scheduled council meetings, strategic planning committee, organization, annual organizational. That would move into the per diem rate and this is just a. It's not their cop, like their exact policy, because obviously it's out of their template, but again, we just wanted to provide just. How it could be clearly, clearly defined for council, just so. We can kind of clean up the council meetings and leave less gray areas for council when they're claiming stuff.
Any other questions or feedback for administration? Councillor Larsson.
On page thirty five, these two seem to be to me at odds with each other where it says set limits of 12 board meetings and 12 subcommittee meetings with council's authorization, blah, blah, to the end. Certain subcommittees are going to meet more than once a month and they're typically going to be a, you know, a short duration thing where the job is done. So limiting that, but so we're saying you can only have one subcommittee meeting a month. Yet you, if you don't sit on a board, you can just go ahead and go to the conference. It seems like well, it's okay to spend money here, but it's not okay to spend money here.
Are you referencing that in contrast to the ASB conference specifically?
Well, that's how it's written down here.
Yeah. And I think the rationale for the ASB conference has been, we've discussed that. And it's still up for council consideration. You seem frustrated, Councillor Larsson.
Yeah.
Do you want to elaborate?
It can, if it's the ASB is set, it can be any conference. So what we're saying is you can only go to 12 subcommittee meetings, but pick a conference and you can go to it even if you're not on the board.
So to that point, I think the conference was specific to boards. So for example, if you, the example CAO Henderson gave is if you're sitting on the Wheatland Housing Management Body, you would be automatically approved to go to ASHA, for example. One of my feedback was going to be that we may want to be specific with that just for cost control. So if you opened it up, I'm not, I, nobody on this council would do this, but you could probably find some housing related conference, say in the States or some wildly expensive. And I think if it's too open, I think it is a given that, you know, I would always personally support WHMB members going to ASHA or FCSS members going to the, I'm going to butcher it, AFC, AFSSAA conference. I think I messed that up. Yes, thank you. But perhaps we could just like have that be very clear. And maybe if everybody could just provide, like there's a recycling, I know there's the FCSS, there's housing. There is a community futures, like one that typically community futures might want somebody to attend. Trying to think of other boards. I think those might be the main ones. And then outside of that, maybe we come to council just to control those costs. So does that make sense, Councillor Larsson? It's not a carte blanche.
So to go back to my, this is not difficult to understand. It says ASB conferences and other common boards or commissions filled by the majority of council. It's not specific to ASB. What that says is pick a conference, you can go to it, but you can only go to 12 subcommittee meetings. They seem to be at odds with each other.
Yeah. And I think we need to look at them separately, both through a lens of cost control. But I don't have the same interpretation from the way CAO Henderson is explaining it as you do. Is everybody, does everybody, are other people interpreting where we're potential, like what where administration is potentially going with the recommendation to essentially pre-approve a conference for those who sit on specific boards is how I, and I would like it to also, I would ask for council consideration when the time comes for it to be a specific conference. I think we would need clarity in the language around that for sure. I think administration was going to leave it more carte blanche, like to a conference. Was that the original intention?
Yes. And the only reason why I would leave it kind of in those vague terms is that I do believe that sometimes the conference names do change from time to time. A good example would be Farm Tech with ASB. I know that right now in policy that council can either attend the ASB conference. Might even be an ASB member. Sorry, I don't have that exact wording off the top of my head, but that or Farm Tech, and I believe that Farm Tech is now renamed. So kind of what we're also looking to do is potentially future proof the thing. And what it might be is some, something along the lines of up to a three day conference in
Alberta.
Alberta, like the provincial boundaries or something like that, just so it doesn't have to come back on an annual basis. And again, this is just administration's recommendations again, are just kind of a starting point. Just to facilitate discussion and gather feedback from the committee. Administration again has no desire to have input on the policy. We just need some direction to kind of finish off this resolution that was passed by council.
Deputy Reeve Clausen.
And then I just throw a wrench in the system here a little bit. There was previous councils here when one councillor knew he wasn't coming back, had, I think, the Alberta Care Conference, I think the outgoing councillor invited any or all of us to go if we wanted to, or he specifically asked me to go to some of them to kind of onboard a little bit to it. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to be elected again, but it was just kind of, because there's a lot of information you gather and carry on and gives you a chance to to work and carry that idea forward in case you don't get elected or you choose not to get elected. But it's it's a really beneficial to the community. But those can be dealt as they, as things come up, right? You're not going to get this all perfect, but some, I definitely agree, there needs to be some general values put here. So we are clear on it. And then from there, I mean, if someone wants something different, it's a motion to council.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there would be that intention that you could still deal with one offs or exceptions through a resolution. It's just these almost essentially standing or where we historically have had council consensus on attendance, just it's essentially red tape reduction from having it come to council and instead have it be in policy.
And kind of furthering that, if you look at, you could almost give each of us a budget if you wanted to, because there's lots of stuff that I, you know, myself, just we're looking at me, there's stuff I could have gone to. FCM is a prime example. I've never been. I'm considering going to the one Calgary this year because it is cost effective. But there's, I just never saw the justification in that. And that was just me, whatever. But that's a, that's a huge cost savings in my regard, but I maybe pick up for it somewhere else. I can think of GFL with the composting. I attended some composting things and I think we bought a membership into that because it was good to know what was out there and be able to lobby that. And now that it's died down, probably don't need to do that anymore. But at the time it was really important to get involved in there just to make that, to find out what's going on and be able to have a voice there. So then those things do come up from time to time.
Councillor Kestner.
There's 12 subcommittee meetings I don't agree with. And Scott just alluded to, it was the time JFL. There was more than 12 subcommittee meetings during the year just for that project. And I'll take the housing board right now. If you're on the building committee meeting, building committee, that's four meetings a month. When you get the vice belt, there's no more need for it. So put a blanket on it and try and, oh, we're trying to control costs. But in the same sense, you're barring yourself from participating in a meeting on the board that the board has picked you to do. So if you do it for free, I don't think it's fair. I don't think anybody here invents meetings and then wonders if it's cost effective or not. And those, we'll go back to them, building committee meetings, there is probably, there could be 10, 12 engineers and accountants at these meetings. The cheapest paid one at the meetings, the councillor. And we want to limit it. I don't think it's good.
Yeah, we definitely have diverse perspectives around it. And so we're not precluding anything. Councillor Larsson, did you have something to say? We're not precluding any participation in any committees or subcommittees. Every committee appointment is by council resolution at our organizational meeting in terms of the boards that we represent the county on. I think what we're, what I'm approaching this by is through a lens of striking a balance between responsibility for stewarding tax dollars, which does include our perdiems and you know, associated expenses with attending meetings and streamlining things so that we're not using council time, you know, to make decisions that are being fairly consistently made. There is a opportunity where somebody could bring a request for additional subcommittee remuneration to council for consideration. And then council has the responsibility to make that decision, weighing all of the factors involved in that decision. It doesn't prevent that. It just streamlines those committees where you might have, like I said, on a board where there's one subcommittee meeting a year, we try and coordinate it with a board meeting. So it's zero additional expense to the county. But there could easily be, you know, a time when that can't be coordinated. And we have, I have heard rationale presented previously where committees can actually save money. If you have, for example, a, an HR committee where you have a subset of three of the board members, say out of a board of, you know, 10 or whatever. And then that's a, an efficiency for that board's governance. So I think we've heard support for remunerating, like compensating people for participation on that. But ultimately, council is responsible for our budget and for controlling costs. So it's not preventing that. It's just bringing it to a council decision. Does anybody else have any questions either about what administration has presented or feedback on specific recommendations? Recognizing that there is some diversity in perspective, which is important and good. I, I will say I support moving the frequency of the committee to once per term. And I like the idea of it coordinating it so that the committee's work would be done sort of lined up towards the end of that term so that your council's making a decision that impacts a future council, which may or may not include the sitting councillors that are making the decision. And then I, I do like the idea of just having a provision where it's tied to COLA. I have seen council remuneration policies where it's tied to what council gives staff. Now, there's pros and cons to that. The pro is that every year when you're setting that, the argument could be made that you're impacting your own compensation. But there have also been times where we have made difficult decisions and for example, our staff haven't gotten COLA historically. And then you're not, you know, your council's not getting COLA when you're making that difficult decision to control costs with your own team. And so there, there's definitely pros and cons to whether you tie it to an index or whether you tie it to an actually approved compensation budget. I don't know what thoughts are on that.
Maybe you could do it to the lesser of the two.
Something, that's a good idea. I like that. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that one? It's obviously a change from our current practice. Is everybody fairly comfortable with the recommendation? Are there any of the other changes that anybody has any feedback on? Appreciate the work on this. And it was a, I think a comprehensive summary of some of the challenges with our existing policy and ways that we can improve our governance and streamline things. So thank you to administration. Do you, do you need more clarity or direction on anything?
We'll re-watch the video and integrate the changes and then bring it forward for council at a future council meeting for vote on the policy.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So you're stating that it's useful to have taped meetings so you can find out our dialogue and then banter back and forth. You find it very useful.
No comment. All right. Perfect. Well, thank you. Let's move to 2.3.
Yes. Good afternoon, council. On page forty, one of your agenda package is the review of the approved strategic plan. So the administration did review the strategic plan and our thoughts were that it does still provide administration and council good guidance on the goals and what county council is directing administration to kind of try to achieve over the next couple of years. So one question I did think specifically in what the, most of the changes at the county have been is administration is pouring a lot of our time into the Westside Servicing Study and that is captured in the strategic plan. And kind of like what future issues that will be Wheatland be facing? How can we make sure that they're in this, in the strategic plan? And again, I do think that they are all still in here. So that was administration's feedback. And then I guess some questions to ask council themselves is it has, our strategic plan has been presented at some town halls kind of throughout the county. We haven't, we received some interest from the, the public. And nothing really opposing the strategic plan that's the, the council approved strategic plan. So there hasn't been any comments that we administration have heard that said, no, like we're not aligned with the strategic plan. We do find it like a foundational document for us to follow. With kind of just organizational actions and just decisions that we make on a day to day basis, when you kind of bring our decisions forward to council. So it's kind of just some questions that the committee should consider is does the committee kind of feel that the strategic plan is still a relevant document? Is our economic development and diverse economy, is that still in the forefront of council's mind? When you think of Wheatland County and how can we sustain and support growth within the county? And the other one would be service levels. Does the county think that, or does a committee think that, you know, as we face this rapid growth, we need to keep up our service levels? And that's kind of what our strategic plan outlines. So again, there's some other essential questions in this document that are, are in the package that everyone can review. And kind of what we're looking to do is just confirm the existing strategic plan with council and just making sure it's still aligned with your vision. And if there is any feedback on this plan, should it be emphasized or incorporated, incorporated into the strategic plan? So the strategic plan that was approved by council by resolution is on, starts on page forty four. And again, it's got your four pillars, picture of council and yeah, that's about it. If there are any questions about this RFC, please let me know. Thank you.
Committee's thoughts. Any questions regarding what administration has presented or any comments?
I guess for me, I think that the strategic, strategic plan is still relevant to what we're working on. I think, like you said, our focus right now is business development and diversifying economy. And I think we're making strides that way. I think we still need to focus on that though. And so that's one part of it, one pillar, I guess. The others.
Through a diverse and thriving economy, sustainable organization, strategic partnership and communication is the pillars.
Sustainable organization. I think we've been working lots towards this internally to, you know, bring technology forward. I think that's still an ongoing initiative that requires further work. Strategic partnerships. This could probably use some work. We I think maybe we struggle in this area. Whether that's solvable, I mean, in the short term or not, I don't know. And communication, I think we're doing a really great job and communicating with our ratepayers in different kinds of ways and communicating from administration to council is excellent. So I don't know if we consider this kind of one pillar that is maybe more complete than any of the others, that we could choose something else. I don't know. But we're in the last year of our term. I'm not sure we'd be want to be re, you know, like redoing the whole thing. I think we're just, this is a good opportunity to say that we're on our way in all of them, I think. So I would say we're doing a great job.
Other thoughts or feedback?
Yeah, for me, I was just, the strategic partnership is, is a challenging one for sure. And some of it is like, I think at the staff level, it's fine. It's maybe in the political level, which is, you know, I can think of some many different ways that this sounds good on paper, but to actually get it going forward is challenging. I'll use an example of waterline going. I'll, I'll use an example, a waterline going through our, our county should be easy to hide, die into, but it isn't. It comes with things that are, it should be an easy achievable goal, but it has a bunch of political stuff that's attached to it. And that's just the reality of it. So it's, it's, it's not. I don't know how to change it to make it any better. Sounds good on paper.
Other feedback for administration?
And just for the committee's uh knowledge is that this document, somewhere in this document, I'll, I'll have to find the exact reference, but it does say that this will come back to the committee or council or the committee to review on an annual basis. So hence why it's coming back to the committee for review. Administration does, doesn't really anticipate sweeping changes to it, but it was something that was in the plan and the plan was approved by council. So administration just does want to make sure that we're following through with that.
Any other feedback? I think I would echo the comments that have been made so far. I agree that I think the pillars are still good strategic priorities that we should be focusing on. I, I think we do need to have an increased focus on the servicing that you referenced, um, just with the approvals that we have and the you know, the time, we need to be timely with that decision-making and so I think we need to increase our focus on that. One strategy I wouldn't mind just maybe for the committee to consider to bring back to council for consideration is around the strategic partnership. I wouldn't mind just pointing to other orders of government as well, like the province and the federal government. There, you know, obviously one of the potential developments in the county is having some challenges with federal approval timeliness. And we also have found in the past that having partnerships with our provincial colleagues can help address challenges, whether it's with a something with servicing or whether it's with the development or, you know, a provincial approval that's needed for something. And so those relationships are critical. And we do, we've done a fair amount of advocacy in terms of resolutions to RME and just advocating for change with the province as well. So I wouldn't mind just integrating that if it's not a huge deal to add that. Cause I think it's just one gap in there that we have. I think the rest of our strategies, some of them are still aspirational, but I think that we are committed to working on them and making progress on them. Is there anything, any other feedback anybody would like to provide? So I give administration good, a good foundation?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to agenda item 2.4. Welcome, Jamie. Oh, we'll just get you to hit your microphone. You do. Yep.
Good one. There we go. Uh, welcome, Reven Council. Pleasure to be here. I've got two presentations back to back today. The first one is on council business tours. So this arose from uh council motion CM twenty twenty-three, ten eleven, um, asking for a discussion around uh council business tours. Primarily, these have been, been done ad hoc in the county and other jurisdictions that I've also queried. It's the same thing. There aren't any former policy, formal policies. There's an attached report with uh kind of a scan and my questions to other municipalities around this. So really aren't any formal policies. However, visiting um our county's employers such as Nutrien, there was a visit arranged to Nutrien. I believe it was about two months back. Makes a very good impression on the taxpayers, uh, gives us an opportunity to listen to their concerns. I believe Nutrien is the, it's the largest employer at the current time and I believe one of the biggest taxpayers. Oil and gas might be contributing more, but uh, so having a visit there gives us more understanding of their business needs, a little bit of BR and E. Also that they are seen and heard um and creates a favorable impression. I've never heard anyone complain about council visits. I'm, I, I am trying to arrange more. I would like to get into Orica. I have asked Rocky Mountain G T L now that, or Rocky Mountain Clean Fuels, now that they are operational to arrange another visit. I haven't confirmed that yet, but a couple of uh points there suggested best practices around this would be to continue doing this. Primarily ad hoc, um advertise the fact, some counties do this, that we are open to have our councillors come and tour your facility. Wheatland, of course, being large, uh, very large municipality and uh many of our businesses are small to medium, so they run out of properties and so forth. That may not always be the best fit. So another idea that I had was a kind of a, uh, something that I've come up with and also have heard about is a coffee with business uh event that we could hold here at the county, maybe on a quarterly basis, use an ECC room. Get councillors, administration, myself, come invite area Wheatland businesses to come and to talk. It could be a formal structure. There'd be an agenda around that, something like um you know, we would have introductions, we'd listen to feedback and then maybe we could even have topics, small brief presentations on topics. Something like Travel Drum, for example, if they wanted to present to our businesses or a provincial, a new provincial funding program of some sort. So it's an idea I have, I would like to try. I'd like to try to incorporate that and get that moving, see what happens, see if we get three people or if we get a good turnout. It could be a good avenue in order to have that collaboration between council and businesses and try to get a a bigger audience than just touring one facility. But the large facilities, it is our intention to arrange as many tours as we can as they come available, um, you know, and to offer that to council. The feedback that I received is basically that. There is an attached report which is primarily just, this is from the, this is basically from the RFD. It's here. I've talked to Rocky View, uh, the new staff at Rocky View. City of Edgery, City of Lethbridge, Knee Hill, Strathmore, uh, and most of them not, actually, in fact, none of them do have formal policies or uh codified anything like a best practice. It's, it's, they're, all the tours are done ad hoc. Some are, you know, businesses will invite or councillors have an interest in seeing something, so they approach administrations, it could arrange a visit or a business does invite council. Where we start to see more of a best practice potentially is kind of coffee hours or some type of a networking event where people are you know, invited to the county and that can be done very low cost. And I think we should, in my opinion, I would, as administration, I would like to try an event like that and to see what kind of a reception we get. So there isn't a lot of additional information of any sort I can really relay around this. But if there are any questions, uh. Anybody?
Any questions on this information?
Not, sorry, not a question, but
Councilor Priest and then Councilor Larsson.
Sorry. Just to say that I would love to go to any business tours. I missed the one to um Nutrien and I'm sad about that, but uh yeah, I, I think it's really great that we have a good understanding of what these big businesses are in our area and, and to meet with them and hear what kinds of things they're uh working on and how we can help them overcome barriers or, or whatever is happening for them.
Absolutely.
Love it. I love the idea.
I'll try to, I'll try to facilitate that as, and uh, you know, see what type of reception we get, but I like to always get into those businesses myself, so it doesn't hurt to have others come along and I have visited many, so I would like to, to keep that kind of a thing going.
Thank you. Council Larsson.
First, I like your enthusiasm.
Thank you. I'm enthusiastic.
Have you, have you given any thought to having like a regional business meeting where you would go instead of bringing everybody into Strathmore, bring, like, take a few of us and go to, you know, whether it's the Rosebud Community Center or, you know, so that you can get the local businesses so that they're not all driving for an hour and a half to get here. That's just something I was thinking might be worthwhile.
Point well taken and I have uh given some thought to that. That would work for Rosebud for sure. Yeah, that's, that's a good point and it probably have to be done in the evening potentially as well. And so, yeah, and I'm thinking on a quarterly basis is my initial thought. I'd like to try an inaugural one to see what type of reception we get and then fine tune it from there and see how it goes, because it's very low cost barrier of entry, just a room and some coffee and donuts probably or, or pastries. But yeah, good point.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea, Council Larsson. Any other questions or feedback for administration?
It's always good to uh talk to some of our bigger employers and, and, and find out what they're doing. You learn more by talking to the, the people that actually do the work. And, and what I think we learned at the last one, um, about a road that should be upgraded because there's been a big employer in the area for a long time and we never even thought about it, right? It was never. But it's always good to talk to businesses. Whether, you know, I think you gotta kind of have a, maybe a limit on the size, because you might have some of the smaller more tourism types trying to dominate some of this, I could see. But and then, you know, it's not an open forum's good and I, and I like the idea of maybe going divisionally if you can find somebody, you know, go in and and, and have it so people can come and talk. Yeah, it's always good to learn because we represent these people and, you know, as a councillor, I, I know quite a few of my businesses. I've, I've toured them, talked to them. You know, and uh, you know, try to find out what they need, but that's just me. The rest of council doesn't know all that stuff. So it's always good to share that.
Yeah, point well taken, for sure. Understood. There's no other questions on this, then I'll get into the second presentation, which is, we'll answer some questions even from this morning. So a number of, at the end of twenty twenty-three, a number of initiatives, we started from basically beginning of twenty twenty-three and pushed them all out this year as much as we could. There's been a number of completed initiatives. One is the, and I'll show each of them to you individually. One is the investwc.ca website. It's our investment-focused website, has our value proposition, site selection factors, industries, and there's a business directory on there. So I will show that to you in a minute. It also features aerial photography and photography from the county specifically. We had hired a photographer out of Drumheller with a drone to go up in Goldfinch and in Rosebud and a few other areas and to get aerial photographs and videos that we've uh integrated into that new website. So it is Wheatland-specific. Content was written by me. It's a work in progress. If you look at it, I'm sure you can find areas where, where improvement could, could be noted, uh, text or uh, you know, photograph, photography that could be swapped out and improved upon. Things that could be added in that. It is a work in progress. I am learning to update that and I can do changeable text and photography myself. So um, it's, it, it's intended to be a one-stop shop for everything related to investment in the county in one spot. And a lot of uh research went into that, uh, looking at best practices of websites throughout the world, especially North America. I looked at some very good exemplars, mostly American, a few in Alberta that are quite good, that uh kind of provided inspiration and I looked at what we need and what investors ask for. So those site selection factors that I'll show you the menus of and the value proposition and then backed up by data and then everything is there. Everything that I need or an investor needs is right there. They don't really need to go to the county website, although there is a link back and forth. And a vendor worked with me. Also, thank you to the IT group, which helped a bit, helped a lot actually uh to, to help us through that journey. So it was good. So I will show you that in about a second and the rest of the tools are mainly also integrated into there. So business and community profile, we completed a new community profile for Wheatland County. That was done by TNC Publications. It was no, at no cost to the county, businesses uh reserved advertising space in there and that paid for the publication. It's intended to be good for several years, uh, so we don't need to do it yearly. And it has information on Wheatland's hamlets, community services, events and so forth, and I'll show you that. Online business directory, the online business directory is the first one that Wheatland has had that I know of. It's a public directory, businesses self-sign up on the website, they register the business. I know there's roughly two hundred and forty businesses in Wheatland is my guess. Two hundred and forty plus, uh, and we have about roughly a little under seventy on there and that's just with social media and emailing new businesses. So I intend to get out, drive around and hand out flyers as the weather improves a bit, go to some of the hamlets, stop at the businesses and say, we would like every business in Wheatland. So a Wheatland business in my definition, you offer a good or service to the public. You are located in Wheatland or have part of your business operations in Wheatland. As we don't have business licensing, that's the kind of the definition I'm going. So if they're a Strathmore-specific business, know if they're a business, maybe they have part of it in Wheatland or all of it in Wheatland, then we're, you know, we're, it, that, we're, we're, we're okay with that. So I would like help. I guess that's part of why I'm coming here today to talk about the tools. Please help me to promote them. If as councillors, you have your own businesses, please register them. There's no conflict of interest whatsoever there. We want every Wheatland business here as we get the large developments like Davaland or CGC. They have a supply chain. They need fab shops to make things. They need contractors. They need grading. They need all of this construction and so forth. And so we want to make sure that those large developments have an impact and uh that the small and medium-sized businesses see a net benefit from those developments and that's my goal. Part of it is in this business directory is to, when the company comes into Wheatland and they say, what do you have for fab shops? Which CDC did ask me at one point. I can give them a list and I say, they're right here. So that's part of that. Uh, two others, which again, I'll show you, uh, Invest in Alberta magazine article. So this is something that goes throughout the world to Alberta International Offices, to the federal government, to potential investors, to universities and so forth. And we did reserve an ad for the second year in that. Communications helped me to draft an infographic, which I'll show you very briefly. It looks good. I think um promotes the county. The last one is a newsletter uh that we drafted, talking about all of the recent developments in the last two to three years that we can send out as well and also promote. But let me just pull up the, uh, sorry. Just pull up the new investment website. It's investwc.ca. Invest in Wheatland. Let me just, I hope this is visible. So the top menu bars are the important ones. Site selection. So these are the major factors that investors typically look at. Transportation, tax and incentives, which we have and others don't. Industrial cluster, land, labor, utilities, planning and development. So each section opens individually. There's information there. Key industries. So we have all of our key industries here, manufacturing. I call manufacturing, energy, which is uh obviously oil and gas and others. Agribusiness, tourism, major employers. I'll just click on a couple of these. So these are our, our big employers, so we're profiling them here. People want to know who else you have in your area, kind of, and there's quotes, which I've gotten from the businesses and I hope to add more. So we have some from, one from Nutrien. We have one from, I've asked Rocky for one as well. We're looking for more of these kind of testimonials as well. I will show you, because of the presentation today, I will show you the tourism one. There is a tourism-specific page. Again, photography, I got this from the theater, but if there's better stuff. Hamlet of Rosebud, again, link to the website for Rosebud. Guest ranches, golf. Uh, and then individual profiles, which I'm happy to add to. I'll just, sorry, I'm going through it quick, but uh data and maps is our, our dashboards. So we, we subscribe to a service called Local Intel and there are information, broadband map. I know these take a couple of seconds to load. I'll show, maybe I'll show you this one. These ones show logistics, uh, distance. They used Origin Business Park as a reference because it's fairly close to the city and we need one reference point for these dashboards. Ports, obviously, ocean. And they, again, they load. You can zoom in, rail to the logistics parks in Calgary and also at uh Calgary Logistics Park in Rocky View. So uh, resources is another section. Uh, I'll show you partners. So under partners, these are groups that we work with, mostly nonprofits, community futures, SWCC to some extent. Prospect, Travel Drum is there. I put trial, uh, Invest Alberta Corp. because they're very instrumental in helping us with larger investments. And WID, and again, I can add to these things. It's this uh considered to be a bit of a starting point. I'd like to show you the business directory. It's integrated in this website. Again, easily add your business. So you click on here. It asks for some information, contact details, and if you have a logo, website and so forth. Categories, again, these are initial, um, can be changed, can be added, most of this stuff. We've got about under seventy, but I'm hoping to grow that to at least, I know there's two hundred and forty potentially or, or more businesses, I estimate around two forty. So I'm hoping to get this up to two hundred, say, or even complete. You know, you've got Built Right Stairs, we've got Bandit Diesel, we've got, and these are all companies, they have come here, they sign up except for the ones we took from the old uh WC Mercantile, WC Experiences. Those ones were already listed, so we took those over, but uh, very easy. I'd love your help to please promote this to your, your constituents. I'd like every business to be here. Again, I'll do some driving around and handing out flyers. I want all the Rosebud companies. I want all of them and you know, in Carsland, I want everybody who's on an acreage and has a shop. Anyone that offers a good or service to the public is my definition. So if you have a farm and it offers something for sale, sure, sign up. Uh, other than, I mean, like, we're only looking if you have something, a good or service to the public. Other than I mean, like, we're only looking if you have something, a good or service to the public. Maybe you have a contracting business or custom harvest or something, that's fine too. Or consulting business is even fine. So that's our. Business directory, partners, I've showed you, there's a news and resources section here. So major news stories are here, all of the big ones, the Daval and the C G C, the, you know, all of the big developments. Documents here, I have. Strategy here, the old investment traction strategy, the new investment attraction strategy, which I'm working on this year, will should also reside here. The newsletter, I'll briefly show this. So this newsletter is something that I drafted. I have to figure out a way to distribute it other than online and here, but be great to promote this. Talking about the big news stories, talking about our industries, all of the events. Census data from the new census of two thousand and twenty-one. Broadband municipal tax incentive and so forth. So. I know it's a lot of information, but I just wanted to show you what's available and. Let me go back to documents. Community profile. This is another document. This is the one that T N C Publications did for Wheatland County. It 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 wasn't at cost to the county other than a few staff hours. I didn't write most of the content because I already had most of it. In other places, I provided it to them. T N C did all of the majority of the business development with our businesses, included Strathmore businesses. There wasn't enough just with Wheatland advertisers, so they reached out to Strathmore and Independent Villages as well. So. Again, they they went out to a photographer. There was a guy in Carsland. I'm trying to remember his name. Steve Jeffries. Guy has brilliant photography on his website and he provided most of the images to us for free. So shout out to him for for doing that. Again, employers, some of our employers are here, a welcome to the county. Investment proposition type of stuff, bit on agri food. You know, talking about our economy, our industries. Demographics. So this is two thousand and twenty-one data, the old community profile, I believe it was two thousand and sixteen or something. So this is all updated. Have Martin Shields. Talking about a little bit of our data on demographics, language, income and so forth. It's all here. Labor Industries, there's our M L A. History. So we took a piece of that, came from the old one, maps. I hope I'm not going too fast. I just intended to kind of show you where it is and. Communities. So this is this important section, talks about our hamlets and and our population centers. Here with symbols showing what amenities and stuff are available. So example, Hasar, you know, the baseball diamond, Community Center, Curleen and so forth. This was. Based, I believe, on the old one, plus the information that was online and on the website. Advertisement, some are Strathmore businesses, some are Wheatland. Locations. So here, again, event calendar, tried to capture the bigger ones, the ones that don't change as much. For the Rosebud specific stuff, the Carsland Aggie Days. I think there's some Strathmore ones in here as well. Yes, there are. We did look at a joint publication, but it never materialized. So. We then had to go their own on this one as a Wheatland specific versus a Wheatland Strathmore specific. But we did, we did make that overture to the town of Strathmore and an offer, which I didn't get any. Any feedback or or commitment on that. So we we went ourselves. What else can I tell you? So that is that. Make sure I've gotten all of the the tools. I think that basically covers it. So I guess my ask to to counsel, I think it's fair. Yeah, if I, if you can help me to promote the business directory. Number one, please, if like, if you have a business or your relatives have a business in the county or part of it in the county, please sign up. We want it as complete as possible. As far as the promotion of the website, please help us to promote that as well. If anyone's interested, I also have hard copies of the community profile. And I'll show, I forgot to show you the Invest in Alberta ad, which I'll show you now. Doesn't make sense. That's strange. Just, I looked it up on my desk. There is a, I believe there's a. There is a. Okay, yeah, and and I'll just let you look in page fifty-eight and fifty-nine of that publication. Strathmore has one on page forty-six if you're interested. So Wheatlands has obviously our value proposition and our site selection and the fact that we managed to attract those larger developments in. And it's quite professionally done. So that that kind of concludes a bit for the. Some of the initiatives that were completed. We have a number of of other things we're working on. I have, like I say, a. Wait a second. A economic development strategy, which will be new, I'm working on. I've got a good part of the way on that completed. But it requires some business data and business feedback, which I'm waiting on. We have a couple of grants that we're waiting on. One is with Prairie Scan for Calgary Hydrogen Hub. Which is very likely going to happen. We're just waiting on confirmation and we've received some funding through that. To work on new energy initiatives and try to build that industry within Wheatline County. An N red application, which we have in Northern Rural Economic Development, to work on both aerospace and energy initiatives. So there that is in as well. Regional workforce strategy, we are. Engaging with the community futures and our regional partners on that. It's still under development. There's going to be some workshops and so forth. And then we will get a final report with some some direction. One other thing, so signage phase two, I know that falls under special projects. That has been completed. So this year we. Are sorry, in two thousand and twenty-three, nine oh one twenty-four and Glenmore Trail. Now feature new Wheatland County Gateway signage and two thousand and twenty-four, where we are pushing ahead with a. I guess a phase three to that project and then successive years, there may be, there will likely be a phase four and. Potentially a phase five on that as well. So I think I, again, take a look at the tools, the links are mostly there and please help to promote. If there are any, any questions on any of it?
Any questions or feedback? I had Deputy Reflaston and then Counselor Larsson.
Well, thank you for the presentation and, you know, sitting in this chair, I recall when we started talking about hiring an E D O. And, you know, this is to me is a return on investment. So I do say thank you again. You've you've got passion, you you've. Got people together to 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 actually promote and and show what we have and I really appreciate that. One suggestion on Invest W C underwater and wastewater. We do have a regional water line on the east side of the county, Wheatland Regional Corporation. There is capacity to service off of that line. And it would be great to have. A sizable water user on there would help fund and lower the cost of water servicing in the future. So if there's a way. To, you know, have a link to their thing or something like that, because it services a large area and this county invested. Six million roughly into that over the over the years and sit on the board. I just, I think it's. A great economic. Source of, because everybody needs water before they develop. So and that comes on the number one and everything. So, but again, thank you very much. You know, like I said, return on investment. This is amazing to see.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We got more to come. A question on that regional water line. Is that the one that runs along Highway two or is this the one that will be going south?
I can follow up some information.
It goes from Standard to Gleason and Rosebud within the county and then. Two villages, Standard and Rockyford.
Went off. Sorry, I was just saying I want it as complete as possible. So very happy to add that. I should also make reference to the W I D and then. There's a further thing is I received more information from Atco today on their capacities and process and stuff. So once they've. Said we can share that, I'll I'll try to integrate that into the utilities was always the lacking section. Because I didn't have the information and so it was always hard to get that until I met with Fortis and Atco, which was a very big struggle. Originally, when you meet the right people, then it's easy, but to get the utility was was lacking. But the other stuff, you know, is easy. So appreciate.
Counselor Larsson.
So just a couple of questions on your, the businesses that you want us to put up there.
Yeah.
I'm guessing like village businesses and like I saw Richardson Pioneer up there already. What about, do you want things like seed cleaning plants? And what about, like, there's a organization called the Bow Valley Propane Association. So it's an association of people that need to get propane, but they serve a lot.
Sure.
County.
Yeah.
So you're, it's as long as they do business around here.
Well, I think as long as they're located or have a business in the county. Like if they're like a guy that just comes out and sells something from his car, probably not, but anybody that, yeah, I want it to be complete. And and I understand their businesses that don't want to public it. Maybe they have enough customers and they don't want to.
Just so I know when I start talking.
I absolutely want them all and I and I approve them on the backend. So sometimes I'll have to call and say, are you located in Wheatland? Or and generally they are, but sometimes it's not clear. So.
But Wheatland can mean a village in the or a town in the.
Well, it's a tough one, like independent villages are not technically, I guess, part of Wheatland.
They're not, no.
No.
They serve residents of the county.
So that one, they aren't Wheatland businesses i- 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 in in the strictest definition. If they're like within the boundaries of Wheatland County. Or part of their operations are within the boundary of Wheatland County, then they're Wheatland. Because other than that, we'd open it to Strathmore businesses and then it's. It doesn't make sense.
So I'm thinking of particular, Hazard is just one I can think about.
Yeah.
My head. Richardson Pioneer has a has a big facility there. It's in the village of Hazard.
It's within.
No one in Hazard uses that business.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
That's why I needed clarification on this.
And and I believe some of the independent villages, one of them does actually have a business directory. That's quite good. And I don't remember if it's Hazard or Rocky.
I think it might be, yeah.
I think it might be. It's either Hazard or Rockyford actually has a good business directory online. And I saw I saw it recently and I'm like, wow, that's really good.
Actually, Superior Feeds is another one. It's in Rockyford and it's.
It's a good question, I think.
Town people, as a general rule, I think they do have dog food, but they're primarily egg food or egg. Products.
It's it's a good question. And I and I think the delineation between Wheatland and and other municipalities is important. Because we need to know who are actually, who our taxpayers are, who our businesses are that we invite and and so forth. And obviously, our mandate is for Wheatland businesses. It's it's a good question. If they primarily serve, it'd be nice if they, anyway.
Okay, so it's a gray area.
It it's a bit of a gray area. Yeah, like if it's strictly a Strathmore business, I will just say no.
Right.
Because Strathmore has their own business directory and they have business licensing. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Baker.
You have under Invest W C, it looks good. The, just wondering if you could just add right behind the golf. Courses that we have, the three, you've got the three of them listed, just stick their email or their website, sorry, right behind them, so they can just click on it.
Could can you, on the business cards?
Or just on the page, on the tourism page.
Oh, okay, let me go back there. Let me just find it again. Where where were you referring to?
Under key industries, go tourism.
Oh, okay.
And then down, you've listed the three up.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the.
Go down to golf. Now just put the.
Put links.
Links right behind them.
Yep, yeah, we could. I think there's a couple of them are like Murfield has here. And I have emailed the other golf courses and they haven't either haven't responded because I've asked them all to register as well on the business.
Okay, even if you just put that link that.
Sure, I could put that, yeah. And I'd like them here too, like under these.
It's public, doesn't matter if you put it there or not.
And and the reason that.
We just don't have a lot of tourists around in our county. It'd be nice to.
Understood. I can add that. I can add that. And 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 another point to clarify, maybe that with the business directory and what we have to date. I have a list of, say, two hundred and forty and I've emailed almost all of them. So. All types of businesses, any business. And so most businesses have received an email and that's why sometimes they don't respond to it. And, you know, have to hand out flyers or if somebody prompts them to do it, it'd be good. I'm trying to get the sort of the low hanging fruit to begin with. Get as many to self register and then we'll go, we know there's many that maybe didn't, the email didn't get there or. They're planning to do it, but haven't. So the golf courses, a couple of them are not on there. So, but they have received emails at some point. Yeah, but point well taken. Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback? I'm really grateful for the overview of all the activities and the progress that's been made in this department. I think it's exciting.
Yeah, it's been.
I think we have some really good front facing resources that are very comprehensive for potential investors and. I also love what we're doing to support our existing business and to grow awareness around what we already have in Wheatland.
Sure.
And to build that. So thank you for all of your work and to everybody that contributes to this. We appreciate it.
One more thing I just mentioned before I I leave your space here is that the presentation folder with the, that's also integrated in there under documents. So that's there as well. So everything is there.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
It is helpful when you're speaking to a potential investor, just to have sort of a one stop shop where they can get all the information that they need when they're.
Yeah.
Evaluating site selection. So thank you.
Would say our website is better than a lot of them out there, not bragging. I mean, I had good people helping.
Brag away, brag away.
But yeah, I I would say that Wheatlands ranks up there with the city of Calgary or Olds also has a a pretty good website. Medicine Hat. And then some American jurisdictions that we looked at, like Invest in Texas and so forth, have very good websites, very simple, easy to understand. Everything's there. So.
Oh, this is great. And I think the the visuals and everything, I think everything looks so good. It's it's exceptional. So.
Always ready to improve. So if you've got better pictures that you own and I can use, that's always good too.
Sounds good. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, we've just had a request for a five minute break. My apologies to administration. Back to order. We're almost there, guys. Let's go to agenda item two point six.
Good afternoon, committee. It's a day for administration. And just have the Severn Creek Dam Recreation Area Camping Report. Or request for clarity. Just some information. On January of this year, administration received a complaint about two campers that are living at Severn Dam Recreation Area. As camping is not allowed or not permitted on this use, as a use on this site. In the Land use by law, a written notice was provided to the two campers to vacate the premises. In the report, just to provide some recent background and history on the recreation area. And I guess administration is just looking for, does the committee wish to revisit permitting camping at Severn Dam? Or take, provide some options for mitigating measures like. Parking area, fencing, gating, or just how any input the administration can work on for a council's consideration.
Any questions on the reporter comments? Counselor Baker?
I have a question. I can. Can we lease Crown Land? I'm pretty sure we can because I'm pretty sure that's what. Like, we're not positive, but is that what the golf course does at Speargrass? Because it's Crown Land there places too. Not saying that that's the option we want to take. I'm just saying, I, is it allowable? Or a municipal municipality to lease? Or a business to lease Crown Land?
Yeah, that that's a possibility for the other, the other portion of.
Yeah, okay, thanks. That was my question.
Counselor LaPreece and then Counselor Larsson.
When I, when I was reading through this, it occurred to me that maybe we should just. Sort of. Piggyback with the the policies for Crown Land and just allow random camping and 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 then if somebody's living there beyond. I know that we can't police it so that exactly at fourteen days, we know that they checked in or checked out or anything. But if you know somebody's been living there for half a year, you could go kick them out. But so I don't know. I don't. I don't think we should spend a lot of time on this, but that's just my opinion.
Counselor Larsson.
Unfortunately, I think we do need to spend a little time on this because we have, there's, there's a big difference between camping and living somewhere. And we, there are several, ever since C E O Henderson and I think Brad was with too, took. Took me on a tour of that place. I went back a few times. It's the same campers, time after time after time. Some of them are. Tucked in behind the trees where it's going to be Crown Land, probably can't do much about that, but. They're, what they're doing is they're interfering with Wheatland County residents using Severn Dam for what it was intended to be used for. So I think we do need to spend a little time on this. And and I also know that the village of Standard has had the same problem with. Permanent campers or whatever you want to call it. So I, we should deal with this before it gets out of hand.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Kestner?
I think it already is out of hand.
I think it already is out of hand.
I think it is too.
There's a, these campers have wooden decks and gardens.
Yep.
Like they till the land up and they got a garden planted there. And I'm getting lots of complaints from residents that used to go there with their kids over the weekend, go fishing, and they, they won't go near the place anymore. So we got a place there, our staff go down and pick up the garbage and clean the washrooms, and nobody from Wheatland County uses it. I, I'm not in favor of closing it, because it's a, it's a gem of a little spot. But surely there is something we can do, put up more signage, evict people easier after week, or put a dollar thing in there and they have to pay twenty bucks a night to camp there. I've been to lots of campgrounds, so it's just a.
It's an honor system.
Honor system, and somebody shows up once a week or twice a week and go through it, and, oh, you have them paid and you're here, so hit them up. Even to be there and tell them you can't be here, you can't have a deck anymore on the ground, your garden, this is for grass for everybody. This isn't for your own well-being.
Other questions or thoughts? Counselor Baker?
Um, I, I do feel that we don't have enough tourism places and places to stay in our county. So I'm, I'm all for trying to look at maybe making it an actual campground and having it run something like what we've done at Rosebud and Eagle Lake. We've learned from what to do, what not to do with, not Eagle Lake, what is it, Wheatland Shores though? What to do and what not to do, and, and just make it more structured and have someone, we lease it to someone who, with a contract to look after it. And bring in, bringing more tourism into, into, into our county.
I think that's one of the issues I just double-checked with Glenn. This was never meant to be a campground. This was a day-use area only. Little history on this.
Uh, Counselor Kestner, we'll go to Deputy Reeve Claussen first, and then to Counselor Kestner.
Yeah, clearly there's an issue there, and there's, people that are, have no other place to live are doing this kind of thing sometimes. And I know shortly, there was an article here last week on Global about just down the road here, people that are living in, in place and long-term camping, and people are, there's a push out there for this. So people have a place to live for low-income housing because they have other places to go. Not saying that's something we should do, but it is a problem everywhere. Drive through any Walmart parking lot, you'll see people there sitting for weeks. Sometimes they have no place to go. We should do something here. I'm not exactly sure. I'm not opposed to developing a campground there if that's what the community wants. I don't want us to run it. I'd rather it be contracted out. Maybe there's a business case made for it, I don't know. But I agree, there's, listening to the tourism presentation earlier today, you know, they're, they're looking for things like that. And Drumheller gets quite full, and Rosebud gets full, and maybe there's other options. Maybe it's a good thing to do, but yeah, don't know.
Counselor Kestner.
I think last year, there would be twenty or more campers there every time you go by. So about fifty, sixty years ago, PFRA constructed this dam. There's numerous dams constructed in Alberta, drought mitigation. There's a tap on the one end, and then it leads to Severn Creek. And Severn Creek goes down through the campground in Rosebud and terminates there in the river. And they only let water down that. Whenever the people's dugouts dried up along the way, it was meant for cattle water. Not too much cattle left on that route. Alberta put it in, and then must have turned some of that land over to the county. Why we got what we did, I have no idea. We could have somebody rent it out. I'm thinking twenty campers a night, that's not chump change. I would pay somebody's time. And I believe if we got, sent a letter to the government of Alberta and tell them what's going on, we'd like a campground there. We could have some sort of jurisdiction over top of the Crown land, tell them our problem. Because what happened there a couple of weeks ago is, is just something that comes out of the depths of the city. We don't need them kind of people living here. We just don't. And providing for them is, was apparent for me. So I'm thinking, make it into a decent campground, or, or we'll have to get it back into a day use for a couple of years and get everybody moved away, and then we can slowly go back again. But that's not, that's not the answer. It's a nice spot there. We planted trees there, cement picnic tables. Well, dock. I don't know what else we spent money on. Washrooms.
Any other comments or questions for administration? I guess I'll just retract my statement. I didn't realize there were people living there. Sorry.
I guess just a question, and it might be more to our bylaw or peace officers, but just, I guess, our capacity to enforce, like camping versus residential use. Because we do have campground major minor as discretionary. It is Zoned Park, Parks and Recreation District. Obviously, that's very distinct from, like, permanently living somewhere. I know Crown land, it gets a little bit questionable, because you can stay for fourteen days and then move and be in another, if I understand correctly, stay an additional fourteen days in a different place on Crown land. I don't know how, why that has to be. But yeah, just trying to balance the competing principles. Administration's thoughts?
From an enforcement perspective, it is difficult to enforce because we don't have a development permit to state what the land should be used for. And we haven't said it's a day use or a campground minor or a campground major. Then we would have specific things we could enforce, and right now it's quite difficult because we don't have any rules, so. It would definitely make things easier if we could get a development permit on there, decide on the use. Public service, no camping. That would be a day use area. So if we did.
That's what it was.
If it's, but there's no permit.
Okay, because I'm sure there's a sign that says day use zone.
Yeah, so that would probably fall under parks minor in our bylaw. We could do it that way. Parks minor is for like parks and whatnot. We could do that under the zoning, but a decision will have to be made what type of use we want.
For me, I don't necessarily have like an issue with actual camping. If we can mitigate some of those impacts where it's becoming like closer to residential, and if it means pursuing a D P. I think one of the challenges, I like Counselor Baker's idea, if we could have a service group that would be interested in doing something there. I think the challenge is administration explored that previously, and there wasn't, for example, a Lions Club that was prepared to assume responsibility for it. But, and so at that time, council made the decision to go the route of just like remove the no camping signs. Basically, permit, you know, camping without enforcement. If there's some challenges, you know, we may need to look at, maybe we do a D P so that enforcement has an opportunity to enforce a fourteen-day camping limit. I liked the idea of aligning with Crown land use. The land is there if it can be utilized. It would be nice if it was, you know, also an option for day use for, whether it's county residents or whether it's tourists coming into the area. Those are just my thoughts. Counselor Baker?
There is ways you can mitigate all this, not, not with, with very little expense. If, the most services I would put into it would be power or other than none. Uh, that limits your stay, because you have water and sewer, and people would need to, so it'd be like, that mitigates your two-week stay or one-week stay or even weekend's stay. Uh, you can also do it, have it gated, so that it's closed for the season. And the other one is, you can hire a camp host. They're, they're available everywhere. Um, they'll come in and they'll manage your campground for a free stay at the, at this area. It may have to have a service lot, just that one service, but there is ways to plan a good, a good strategy on planning a campground.
Any other questions or feedback on what's been proposed? Does administration have other questions?
I think we've got enough feedback to come up with a, a plan for council's consideration to move forward.
Counselor Kestner.
When we pass a D P for it, can we make it like county residents only?
That would be hard to manage.
Yeah.
Plus you're not helping your tourism.
Well, the tourists we got there, we don't want them, believe me.
Yeah, but there's way to move.
Yeah. I like your idea of a, of a camp host. Maybe that'd be something to look at.
I was going to say the same thing. I like the idea of a campground host.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too. There are lots of people who like doing that for the summer, and then maybe, yeah, you close it in the off-season. I don't, it's good ideas.
Do people ice fish there? Counselor Kestner, do people ice fish there?
I've seen.
They used to. I don't know if they still.
I don't know if I've seen anybody this year. I haven't been that way.
It was a really late start.
A few years ago, they were, they were ice fishing with nets. Here they, they drained it down to replace the valve in it. Yeah, there was people there like crazy, have these nets, and they get them full here and there, and then they got a little rig that walks the net across to the next hole, and they chop it in.
That's an, just a potential downside to potentially locking for the season is, if we're limiting access for that. And winter camping, again, isn't bad as long as we're mitigating some of the, the, the potentially negative impacts for other users. But I would hate to limit the use. I would prefer if we can find a way to manage those potential negative impacts. Deputy Reeve Claussen.
If you allow winter camping, I would advise never putting power in the site, because the power consumed by those people, this, speaking from experience, trying to keep their place warm, they will not use the propane, they will use the power, and your bill comes and you're like. Electric heaters are horribly expensive to run. A lot of campground operators have learned that the hard way.
Yeah. On a tourism way, looking at it through tourism, usually ice fishing doesn't bring in like, like your, your biggest thing that you're trying to do is pull people here for two or three days. That way they're buying groceries, they're getting gas, they're at least at minimum two or three days. So with ice fishing, you're not really doing that anyway. So you'd be almost better off to lock it up, and do, they can do their ice fishing on it. They usually do it on day trips, so.
Just thinking about like the capacity it would take though to just lock at night or something, and then whether, even if it's not tourist, even if it's local, like we, I think we need to balance it. I do see it as a, like a factor in tourism, but also potentially local residents using it. Price fishing, it could even be, I don't know what they'd be pulling out, and if you can keep it, but it could be a part of food security or. Yeah, it's limited depending on what lake you're on for sure and what species, but lots to consider there, things to balance, but. If that gives you a little bit of direction, you can bring it back to council and see where it goes. Thank you for all your work on that. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
And we have completed our committee of the whole agenda. Meeting is adjourned. Good job, everybody.